Hello, how's it going? Today I am going to be working primarily on segmentation of the scrolls. So you have your scroll here, saved on this fresh new hard drive of mine. And you load your scroll. And you need to be able to take these lines of papyrus and kind of unwrap them like uh like unwrapping a roll of toilet paper into the individual toilet paper squares. Similar idea here. The idea is that once you've unwrapped them into their individual like squares or patches, then uh you can like excuse me, you can then run your ink detector algorithm on them. Because we're presupposing here that your ink detector only works on flat surfaces like they di- like the fragments, for example. And in order to do that, you need to identify where the edges are and you need to excuse me, identify a good shape, know where to break off the shape, all these things. And most people have been doing them by hand, using this thing called Volume Cartographer, which is what co- comes out of the Kentucky lab. It's a very nice piece of software, but it's it's all manual, from my understanding. It's all it's all by hand. So what I'm gonna work on today is something which will automatically segment these things. I think it's extremely doable. I think it's a lot easier than most people make it sound, at least a lot easier to get something really simple. Uh here, let me actually put the Wait, I sent the wrong link. Oh, that's embarrassing. That's embarrassing. Not really. Um like if you click this. No, oh yeah, that's so funny. I uh Yeah, I sent the wrong link. People already liking the tweet. Yeah, this guy just automatically likes all my tweets. Uh delete um and get the correct link, which is uh where is the stream link? Public category, people and blogs. Where's the link? Live, full screen, your channel. Here we go. There. Okay, now I can listen to myself. Beautiful. We'll copy this link. We'll go to Twitter. Working on the at Scroll Prize and the link tweet. Okay, there. Now that we've sent the real link, we can uh get back to cracking. I don't like listening to myself. Um okay, so we have to be able to uh take these lines and say, oh, this is like, you know, good data or whatever. And the other thing you'll notice is that a lot of these are like frayed and stuff and like all this like really gross stuff. It's really not a pleasant thing to do to uh segment, this is what people are calling it. But there are some things that look nice, so like for example, this line looks reasonable. All these other things, um but other places are just like completely mushed together like this spot. Like there's nothing you can do about that spot. So yeah. Let's get started. What I'm actually gonna start by looking at the other data, the fragment data. So sorry, I'm moving something around on my desk here. Okay. So this is the uh thing, let's uh let me pull up the fragment data here. Um what is it? Ash Detect. Yeah, D L Ash Detect. Please don't make me enter my password now, we're good. All right, Fragments, Fragment. Should we do Fragment one? I say we do Fragment one. Volume. Why are there two volumes? Then if we just look at one of these images. Yeah, it's a a line like this, the fragment. Which honestly, like it doesn't even look that good, to be honest. It's actually kind of surprising. And are we certain that this is like the only volume? I think there's like two layers. Oh, yeah, 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 this, this bad boy here. Look at those beautiful liney artifacts. Um so what we need to do is we need to take this. This is actually really good like testing data because we have ground truth. But what we're gonna do first is we're gonna download this. And if I was smart, I would have downloaded this before I started the stream, since I'm already using a lot of internet by streaming. Uh but um yeah, let's download it. So copy this link, copy. Can you copy that? Okay. Copy this link, go over to my download script. Well, it's not mine, I downloaded it from the internet. Oh yeah, I can't right-click on anything in here and I don't know why. It actually crashes uh not only Explorer, it crashes all instances of Explorer. And because the zeroth instance of Explorer is your windowing system on Windows, it also crashes my windowing system. So my taskbar just disappeared, all because I right-clicked on the wrong file in my File Explorer. Isn't that beautiful? I just love Microsoft and all their products. They have no bugs whatsoever, but instead what we can do is we can open it in a terminal, we can do Notepad. Uh if you work at Microsoft and you're watching, I'm sorry, but please fix that bug. Windows is great. Um okay, so this is our stuff. Um Hmm, how can we do this? Uh How should we do this? I I actually don't like using that script. Actually, no, here's a better idea. Um just go over here and So we have certain range, right? And Yeah, here we go. Uh there are four digits here. We're downloading from zero to seven two one nine. Uh start zero and seven two one nine. How much dicks disk space do we have left? Used free. Oh yeah, this is only four terabytes. Hmm, well, how big are these? These are nineteen megabytes. Uh Nineteen megabytes times seven thousand. Is hundred thirty three gigabytes. Oh, that's not bad at all. Okay, cool. And we'll probably immediately downsample it, in fact, so we'll save this. Uh we will go to our terminal right here. You have to like do something really stupid to like run a PowerShell script for some reason. And I I know there's a way around it, like I've def- definitely disabled it on other computers, but I haven't on this. So instead you just do that. And now we watch our internet speed uh crawl to a halt. Which is beautiful. People even watching? No, I don't think so. That's okay, though. Um tweeter. Uh oh, that's funny. Um Oh, interesting. Um Okay, well, you're not here to watch me scroll Twitter, but I also don't think anyone's here. Um okay, so as that downloads, let's start, oh man, let's start drawing vector fields in Scroll Viewer. So the idea with this is that we're gonna use something called a Sorbel filter, or I don't know how you pronounce it, but a special kind of uh convolutional filter. It's really not that special, but you use it to get the direction of change or an approximation of the gradient, I guess, uh you could say, or it's like an analytical gradient or something. Um of your image or of your three D volume in this case. And how we're gonna do that is by just loading it up a few layers at a time and getting the magnitude of change at each uh point. We might do like some F F T junk first to get rid of this like noise. But basically you can see here like the change is like if we run the kernel, then the change here, if we run it like on that square, it's gonna be in the like forty five degree direction. Uh the highest value is in the top left and the lower value is in the bottom right in this like square in the middle of the image. Because of that, you know that the surface is along that uh normal. And you do this in three dimensions. Uh you have to do this in three dimensions, basically, because the scroll is not perfectly vertical. And that's kind of why you see this like weird noisying here is because it's like bending on its side. Uh and you do that and you wanna be able to visualize those in Scroll Viewer because it that's the only place you can really view three D scrolls, from my understanding. Or at least it's my favorite place to view three D scrolls. And uh yeah, then you can unwrap it on your backend and then save your freshly created fragment. And because you're just doing like a Sorbel filter, um you can just do it on the whole scroll at once. Obviously, you'll do it on like a downsampled version. This will, in my opinion, it will never work on something like this. This is just way too noisy. What what can you look at here that tells you about the direction of flow? But if you look, say, here, it seems far more doable. Um but again, like if you know the general direction of flow, you you can just run your kernel, you can run your uh three D segmentation um along these lines and you'll be fine. Unless this is maybe sideways. Is it sideways? I don't think it is, though. I uh yeah, maybe it's facing sideways. I don't know. Like it's like flat relative to the top-down camera angle. Who who knows? Um yeah, we'll see. I just noticed that the the name of this is five six and it is not five six today. Five nineteen. Save. Okay, cool. Um live, yeah. Cool, we're back. Okay, so let's do that, but we're gonna start by working on the fragments because the fragments offer good ground truth data. Uh which is nice and you can like unit test it against uh the existing like flattened fragment volumes and you can test your uh I can test my ink detection on my segmentation versus their segmentation and like try try all these different things, which will be nice. So we're gonna do that right now. How's this download going? Let's see. Um scroll one. Uh oh, where's it getting downloaded to? Uh oh. Stop it. How do I stop it? I'm pressing Ctrl C right now. Escape? Hmm, maybe I just closed the window. Cool. Uh oh, was it was it put here? Aw, man, that's no fun. But it only downloaded like five hundred, only five hundred images. What could go wrong? So let's um let's write a little script here which um solves this issue for us, but something just fell into my keyboard, I need to hide it out. There we go, yeah. Okay. See what bestie chat has to say. Write a Python script which which moves every every file in a folder that has a four-digit file name to another specified folder. Do not move any other files. Enter. Um let's give it some examples. I don't know if, yeah, this was saying it doesn't have any file extensions. Who doesn't have file extensions? I guess Unix users do. For example, zero 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 one dot TIF would be moved, but zero 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 one dot TIF, uh one, two, three would not. Stop generating, save, submit. One message at a time, silly chat G P T. Oh yeah, I'm wearing headphones today, which is nice because it means I can listen to music and you don't have to hear it and I don't have to copyright strike. Can you hear that? Let's see if O B S can hear that. I I don't think you can. You can't hear the Johnny Cash, can you? I don't think you can. Yeah, you don't hear that, right? I don't think you do. Cool. Um now I have even more distractions. Okay, source. If file name without extension is four digits. Yeah, sure, this seems correct. Okay. Uh let's go here. Here. Now, actually, I think I have VS Code window of this. Um I do, look at that. Um let's go over here, new file. Move four digits dot py, paste. And then in the end dot dot slash for All right, what are we gonna call this new folder? I say we call it Fragment one volume. Cool. There we go. Okay. I love how I'm not using consistent capitalization. That's wonderful. Python. Move. There. Did it work? Huh? Huzzah! Okay, cool. Now let's modify our download script over here and make sure our output file is output folder is correct. Um Fragment one volume is what we're calling it. Fragment volume, save. Okay. And then we gotta do the silly execution script. Um Does it make a new window? Will it have that history? Yeah. Oh, look at that. It's not nice. C D S S colon backslash C D scroll scroll one L S C D full. Uh and now we run this. Cool. Okay, that's back to downloading. Um and now that we are downloading that, look at that. Um It's a shame the microphone cuts out when his voice gets loud in this song. Um Oh. Uh Hey, we got someone in chat. Gage Miller. Hello, I'm new to Masui's project and just joined the Discord. Today, just listening to get a better understanding of the progress being made. I understand that you made Scroll Viewer. Yes, I did make Scroll Viewer. I cannot. I hope that's in reference to him hearing my desktop audio. Uh because I don't think he can, which is good. Excellent. Yes, I did make Scroll Viewer. I am trying to improve Scroll Viewer. I am also trying to win using Scroll Viewer as one tool in my toolbox. And uh we're gonna have a good time in the meantime. So all right. Let's uh give Okay, okay. This is downloading, which is great. Let's see how the download's going. Swimmingly, already up to eight hundred. I wish there's like T Q D M on this download scripts, you could like see the like progress bar and know when it would be finished. Uh but this is good for now. How many are there in total again? Like seven thousand? So I don't know, it'll take like an hour, maybe, maybe a little more, a little less, who knows? But this will be good. Uh it'll be really good to have this and have it in three dimensions. Okay, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna add wireframe rendering, or more specifically what is it called? Vector field rendering to Scroll Viewer. Vector field rendering. Let's Google it, too. Three D. How to draw a three D vector field on a line? This isn't text. I'm not using text, I'm using a computer. Um Vector field rendering, three D. Yeah, this is more of a chat G P T question. Uh W E B G L three D vector field rendering. Yes, I cannot hear the music. Ha ha, great, perfect. Glad you hear, Gage. Okay, so this is telling me to use three J S. Instead, I'm just gonna take my shader source code and vomit that into our bestie here. There, say it and submit. If uh okay. So now this is rendering. All right, how are we doing? Yeah, this is just saying silly things. Um how do you here? Render a wireframe cube in W E B G L. I think you can render a, I I've just never used like a uh w- like actual vertex shaders before. So if we can just get that going, that'd be, I think, pretty close. If you can just render a wireframe cube, I think you're pretty close to rendering a wireframe vector field. Okay, cool. So this guy's saying well, why did it? Yeah, continue generating. Absolutely. Oh, cool. Yeah, this is just a H M L thing. Let's put this in on CodePen. Or actually, let's do J S Fiddle. I'm in a J S Fiddle kinda mood. How do I run it here? Wow, that's a silly cube and it's not wireframe. Oh, why do you need a fragment shader? You don't need a fragment shader. Why do you want a fragment shader? You just wanna uh oh, does hmm. With the cube, I know it's not. Let's just actually just take this and just add add wireframe rendering. How would I add wire? How's this gun? Wow, almost a two thousand. In a place called Boulder on the wild Colorado. Wait, really? You Here's my favorite line now. What? Wireframe renderi- I I'm not really parsing this. Wireframe rendering in this context can be a bit tricky. Volume rendering associated with surface rendering. Yes. If you want to include wireframe rendering in the shader above, you likely Yeah, okay, yeah, no, this is this all matches my expectations. Okay, cool. What about What about the white obscured by the law of all you? Question mark. Okay, what's this guy saying? Can't sure wireframes aren't obscured by the law. Wait, how can I make sure? What about making? Oh, he's saying bridge over troubled water. Good for him. Depth peeling. Wow, this might be the shortest Wikipedia article I've ever seen. Depth peeling is my Object independent transparency. Okay. Cool, this actually seems quite doable. Like uh this is a good song. Put it in my playlist. Cool, um. For better have gone and some remain. Let's play this at a moment where lovers and friends, I still can recall as That's something new. In my I love Alright, this is generated, yeah. Make it a shader, cool. I will know I'll never say affection for the to make Wow, this is perfect. Position location. Oh, okay. Bind your line position buffer. Get your light car. Are you lined? Where is the dry erase? I understand. Yeah. Oh. Oh yeah, 'cause this has to follow the same projection and stuff. Good old highwayman. Honestly, something crazy. The number one most listened to location for the Johnny Cash, Willie Nelson, Waylon Jennings and Chris Christopherson quad is also Norway. That does not make sense to me. Number two is Dallas. That makes quite a bit more sense to me. But also being number one does not make sense to me. Did not know they were popular over there. Good for them. Let's paste in some of this code. Alright. How can I integrate that with this code? This song sounds similar. Okay. Oh cool, yeah, this is not Okay, cool. This seems doable. So I'm gonna move this code over here. Uh how fresh is this commit? Quite fresh. Oh, I'm stuck in Volsom prison. So wants me to add these? Cool. No way. And we would reorg this a little there, there. Yeah. Back. Now I guess there's no semicolon here. Cool. So. Layoutation equals zero and active position. Sure, yeah, I mean I d I believe that's correct. Then we need to compile it, right? Ah. Where do we compile our shaders? Huh. Where is this used? It's used here. Yeah, okay. Sure. Huh. I don't really get Yeah, let's just tell Chat G P T to add this. Whoa, no, I didn't mean to do that. There. This hasn't been baby. There'll never be a guns but I shot a man in Reno. So what is it? I don't know what this is, yeah. Oh. Yeah. Uh oh hey, I have to head out. For good luck, I wish you'd known about this S U V project earlier. Hope you can more involve in the next couple months. Awesome, yeah, happy to have you. Ah I see, and this works because they're both vertex and fragment shaders. Cool! Okay, cool. So we're just gonna compile these shaders. This is kinda cool, okay. Hmm, yeah, okay. This makes perfect sense. This p- it's not been a very interesting stream, it's just me figuring out how to do line shaders. But that's okay. Well shot a man in Reno. You know what I'm in the mood for? I'm in the mood for setting up an emulator and playing Zelba. I don't think I'm gonna do that today though. Two people are watching, wow. That's a lot of people. Alright. This girl's the best. I hear a train coming. I keep the clothes warm. I keep my eyes wide open all the time and it's the answer for the tide that binds 'cause you're mine. I walk alive. In flow. Cool, so there's two lines that we're gonna draw. Where is position location? I don't understand where position location comes from. Here. Hmm. Okay, I think I'm gonna stop streaming. This does not seem very interesting. I'm sure. Bye bye. And